She's really smart. She's really smart. She went over and she showed me some things didn't make sense in North Carolina. There's a man named Seth Ketchel. See, this isn't in your thing, so I have to tell you this kind of stuff just real quick. Seth K with a K, Seth Ketchel. He did an analysis of all the elections of all the counties in all the United States of America. Guess which county it came, my bad. There's three categories. Likely cheated, likely didn't cheat, and cheated. What do you think you guys came up with in Graham County? Likely didn't cheat. But the counties surrounding you, some of them did come up as cheating. And some of the things that I've heard and known, you know, I used to work at the bank, so I know a lot of people from both counties. It's amazing what people will do. I mean, it's just, I mean, people are liars sometimes. And you just gotta, you just gotta know, the elections were stolen. We're gonna get to the bottom of it. And if anybody thinks that it's gonna, let's just get over it and go on with it, you've got an understanding, Tommy. That ain't happening. All over the, all over the country, most of the people feel like that. I don't care what your media tells you, which I'm gonna talk about. You need to see Rick, Cyber Supposing, 2000 Mules, True the Vote. Go see what they have to say. Listen to them. Open your heart and your mind, your, just be willing to understand and listen. There was anomalies with voting machines, votes, period. Okay, closed voting. They closed voting precincts in the middle of the night, all five states that were really pivotal. They did it at exactly the same time. If anything I'm saying that you don't know, it's because of the type of news you're listening to. Because this stuff's all over, it's not hard to find. So none of this stuff has ever been done. We need a forensic audit and canvassing. Canvassing is where they're gonna go out and they're gonna go door to door and they're gonna figure out who's voting. But even if we did that, I have to be personal, we need to vote. Alright, so. Was there enough, was there enough screw-ups to overturn the election? Yes, by hundreds of thousands of votes. So that question gets asked to me all the time when I say something like that. The virus, do you know enough about the virus? If God said, hey, what do you know about the virus? Do you know enough about the virus that's changed our lives? I, I got you a book, this one right here. This is how I do things. I give you both sides. This is the one side that'll lie to you and tell you horrible, horrible things are gonna go on. And this guy really, actually, so truthful, he's gonna tell you what he would do with his power. You ever heard of Klaus Schwab? People probably heard his name recently. He's not some sort of freak out now in the woods around here, you know, typing a manifesto. This guy is the world economic leader in South America. Klaus Schwab. My husband's reading it cover to cover. I don't read these people very well. So I just skimmed it. But my husband is reading it cover to cover and he said he's gonna shock these people. He's gonna be shocked how this man talks plainly about what he wants to do. So people that tell me I got a conspiracy theory going on, I say, well, this man's telling you what he's gonna do. I bet I would take his word for it if I was you. What he's talking about has already happened. So Klaus Schwab, you needed to know about him because he's gonna use the virus to do what he wants. He's gonna do it, and he's gonna connect it to climate change. Just watch and see how he acts. So I'm gonna get to climate change in a minute, but one other thing I want you to know. Do you know anything about the testing that they did for COVID? They still, it was supposed to be done way, December. I talked to people at Tallahassee. The whole testing thing is so convoluted and stupid that you have to dumb yourself down to even believe some of this stuff. It's just crazy. It's off the chart. But I got you information from Kerry Mullins, who actually created the PCR vaccine. He died in 2019. He died in 2019. This man knew Fauci, and he knew that there was gonna be things going on with this test. He even said, they're gonna use our, my test to do things. So just, just saying. And you've got lots of links, if you wanna go check out what I'm saying. I mean, either call me a liar or dig in your head, but that'll tell me I know what news you're listening to. You're not hearing the truth. Alright, if we're gonna talk about vaccines, we're gonna have to talk about the Pfizer, Pfizer and FDA going to court to get their data blocked. Did you guys see that? They went to court to block it for 75 years. And by the way, what is the FDA? FDA is messing around with pharma-keia corporation? FDA is messing around with a corporation and going to court trying to block data on shots? With vaccines? Why shouldn't you be able to see what's in those documents? It can't be good if they're trying to get rid of it. But guess what? They lost. The judge said they had released the 55,000 whatever documents, and they've come out. Steve Bannon and another lady, which you're gonna hear about in my, my people who listen to. Dr. Naomi Wolf. She's, she's, she's looking this over. Naomi Wolf was a Democrat. A feminazi, Rush would have called her. A feminazi. Her and Steve Bannon have hooked up. And they're going over and, and getting with, you know, doctors and scientists and all these people. A call to action, because a lot of documents come out. But guess what? The military documents have already came on the, on the vaccines. Do you know what they are? If you look at God and say, I know about these vaccines and I know exactly what it's doing to people's bodies. Do you know what the numbers have done? Gone through the roof with death and, and permanent injury? If you don't know, are you okay with talking to God about virus? I'm gonna shut down a nation. I'm gonna do things that are crazy to myself because somebody told me to do it. I'm not gonna look at the information and data. The data's out there. If you don't know what the data is, that's not anybody's fault but your own. So you should know that. Alright, I covered that. Climate change. I'm gonna really shock you, so you guys hold on to your hat. If God didn't know the planet was gonna hold up under the people that he created, he must be the dumbest God that ever was on the earth. He knew we were going to have cows farting. He's not gonna freak out. He knew. He knew there were gonna be things going on. Climate change. First, it was cooling, then it was warming, and then this climate change. Climate change, doesn't it? So climate change is a money maker. Climate change, vaccines, money maker. Health issues, money makers. When you know what a money maker is, you can go to your Bible and you can say, love of money is the root of all evil. People are evil. They're doing things to make money and they're harming us. The reason I want y'all to know that, I'm gonna talk about in a minute. Oh, I do have to say, who is the, like, the granddaddy of them all about the climate change? You know wars predictions have come and gone how many times? Our wars predictions have come and gone, and none of it ever happened. I mean, sometimes I'm gonna laugh in people's faces that talk to me about this. God knows the end from the beginning. The land and the earth will survive. And when it's gonna burn, it's gonna burn because he said so. I don't wanna hear any more about that climate change bull crap. That's gonna be hooked up to your virus pretty quick, and they're gonna try to do something on you. Be prepared, be prepared. Okay, now I got another thing somewhere. Medical. Probably everybody around, I don't take any medications. I can, there's natural things I can do for anything. So what is medications? Pharmaceuticals. The root word pharmaceutical is pharma. Where do we get the word pharma from? Pharma-keia. Go to your, your concordance, look it up. It's in the Bible. It's taught, actually, predicting what's gonna happen in the end times, which is, when I, I never connected it until just recently. So I'm, I'm a little bit shocked. It's in the Bible, what's going on right now. Pharma-keia. Evil concoctions and potions, sorcery. That makes you think about what you're putting in your body when you're doing medication. Because you know God already made stuff that's gonna take care of it. I'm doing some stuff right now that shocked the crap out of you. I, I shocked the crap out of you. But I am so young and alive. I feel younger, I'm looking younger, things are getting younger in me. I'm, I'm going against medical. I don't, I don't care what medical says. It's not fair to, if, if they're giving you drugs. Triage, triage, yes, yes, yes. Emergencies, yes, yes, yes. But there's doctors everywhere that know what to do. And I can send them to you if you wanna help power out. Okay. Eighty? No. Ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of media is lying. It's, it's owned and operated by what I call Satan's disciples. I just recently understood Satan has players, he has pawns, and he has disciples. And people are listening to it. The media is listening to it, or the media's using things like virus, like climate change, like medical stuff to control you. I'm not a conspiracy theorist, as a matter of fact, if you wanna know the truth. Before 2000, when all hell broke loose here, people were telling me this was gonna happen. People are gonna shut their church down, they're gonna shut their homes down, they're gonna do all kinds of things, Hank. And I'm like, you're a whack job, man. You're crazy. That's not gonna go that far. We're not gonna fall for this. Well, I, my florescence in the, yeah, we won't fall for this. We'll listen to whatever they tell us because they're gonna tell you, you're gonna die, so you better do it. But you don't have to listen to it. You don't have to do it. Bill Gates, my next person, Bill Gates. I want you to hear Bill Gates himself in his own words tell you how he is going to handle population. My kid, he's got his son, my baby, there it is. Oh, that was so cute. So I'm gonna start it?
It won't play up there. It's gonna play up here.
This is Bill Gates talking.
First, we got the population. The world today has 6.8 billion people. Now, if we do a really great job on, first, we got the population. The world today has 6.8 million people. That's headed up to about 9 million. Now, if we do a really great job on new vaccines, healthcare, reproductive health systems, equal or about, perhaps 105%. But there we see an increase of about 1.2%.
So, I'll tell you what to say. He's talking about population is 6.8 right now. Their projection is to go up to 9. If we do a really good job with vaccines, healthcare, women's reproductive health, we're gonna keep that down 10, 15%. Now, I don't know if you really understood what I just said to you. But a man just told you that he's gonna control the population with healthcare, reproductive health, and vaccines. Now, this is consistent with the doctors that I listen to, I go to. These people get people healed. Cancer's gonna be in here long before now, folks, I'm sorry. I don't know why people listen to medical to begin with. We can get rid of cancer, and we could 20 years ago, when I picked up natural healing. It's even longer than that, it's like 28 years ago. So this man just told you, Bill Gates. He's one of Satan's disciples. If he's talking, he's talking from Satan's world. So if we wonder why a whack job like him ends up in a whack job like this guy's book, and you should be listening to him and taking him serious, and you should be worried about having control over yourself, we need to control you. I got something to say. I ask God, what do I gotta do to get to this board? I mean, I can't touch the cotton picking school board. So fine, what do I gotta do to get to this board? And I'm not kidding you, it come all over me. When these, these guys are hitting retirement age or are retired, and they're thinking about retirement. Jacob, I don't know if you are, you're not that old, but I'm just saying. That's what I felt like the Holy Spirit told me. You need to start talking to people about money. Because I know what your investments are doing. I know what they're doing.
Oh, I know.
I hear about it all the time. You don't, you don't know I don't care about money like that. But if you knew, I don't care about money like that. I'd give a crap what happens to your investments. I really don't care. God takes care of me. I live a dream life. You were just out of my place, Dale. I live a dream life. I live in, I live in a beautiful place, doing beautiful things from morning till night. I don't worry about money. God always takes care of me, I always have more than enough. So I'm not worried about your investments, but I know you want them. And God is not mad at you for wanting them. I'm just saying, you're listening to death and destruction, and, and people are acting like this isn't going on. But I'm just saying, like, it's not going on. But it's right there in front of your face. So Bill Gates just told you, he's gonna control you, your population, your children. I got a question. How many children have died of vaccines? What the CDC say? Prior to vaccines, what the CDC rate, what was the CDC rate for children's expectancy to die from the COVID virus? If you can't quote it, then I'll quote for you. It's 99.997. That's what the CDC said. 99.997, if they even get virus, that's what, that's what the expectancy of life was for them. How many people died, how many children have died from taking the vaccine? The numbers are gonna go through the roof. They already have gone through the roof. But we're gonna learn more with the Pfizer documents, and I guarantee it's gonna shock you. Somebody the other day I listened to, they said, you know what? We're experiencing, we're in the middle of a Holocaust, and people don't realize that. Well, I want this board to know it. I want this board to know. Something comes up and tells you, even you, Dale, you're done in November? No. No, no. It could happen before November, that you're gonna have to make crazy decisions because they're expecting a, a red wave or a coma. I mean, they're gonna cheat, cheat, cheat. But the people are ready. I mean, I'm, I'm behind the scenes. I don't listen to this news. I listen to people talk. I listen to people that have, hundreds of thousands of people following them. And they are, they are ready to go vote. We're ready to storm the top cotton picking voting places and take it back. We're ready to take over boards. I mean, our board isn't like that. But there's boards that would do anything for, for Satan, Satan's people. So why am I doing all this to you? I want you armed and ready. Be armed and ready, because I'm telling you, if you think you don't got a doggone emergency coming, you are not raising. It's coming. They have a pack there. You got two more documents in your stack. That's very important. I mean, there's a packet documents from the, that EO from Bill Reed. That's a packet. I'm not sure, I think it was nine pages. That right there is this guy building prisons to house people, to take people out of their homes. For a COVID virus, I can get rid of in 15 minutes. Take my word for it. Give me a lie detector test. I'm, I'm telling you right now, I'll bet you anything you got, I can get rid of COVID in 15 minutes. If somebody gives, give you your symptoms right away, I can come in and take care of it right now. It's not because I know everything, it's because I did it, and I've had so many countless people tell me what they're doing. I just have recently, in the last two months, somebody come to me and say, hey, hey, you told me, nobody die of COVID in my family. I got an 80-year-old with problems. He's going down fast. He had to go to bed. He had to go to bed. Man, you know how my heart rate's going up? I'm like, oh my God, he's already in bed? Jeez, oh Friday, how long's this been? It just happened that fast. It really just went quickly. I mean, because he's old. Um, she said, you got what I need? I keep it on hand. She needs it on hand. You'd be surprised at the people that keep horse paste on hand for COVID. You'd be surprised. I could name names right out of my mouth right now, you'd fall over with shock. Let me tell you what happened to this guy. She, I'm a novice. She left. I, I'm telling her dosing is on the thing. I mean, this, it tells you, it's by weight. So take it down a little, you know? I just kinda gave her some advice of what I did. Basically, every single thing I did, I told her to do. So you know I couldn't wait for her to come in the next day, right? This guy's going down that fast. I mean, you just don't know. I was thinking, oh God, I hope everything goes well for, I hope everything goes well. Because he's 80. She calls me next day and said, man, I've been sweating. And he said, I'm sweating all night. Man, I feel good though this morning. Horse paste. Don't tell me it don't work. It's a mammal. If a mammal can take it, a horse has a sensitive system. If it doesn't die from it, you ain't dying from it. You could overdose on it and you won't die from it. But doggone it'll take care of COVID. So maybe somebody needed to hear that, because you might be turning into, or, you know, coming up on a situation where you're gonna have to, oh my God, I might have to go get it, because that's what happened to me. Okay, so I, I told you about the, the Bill EO, you know? We don't need to build camps to take people out of the home, we don't have to get rid of COVID. We don't have to have ramen die in place, do we? No, well, we shouldn't have to. But here's your kicker. Take your EO and match it up with the CDC documents that I gave you. That in there tells you that they're gonna be able to do things with a phone call. It's coming, folks. This man ain't no dummy. He's richer than rich. You don't know, the whole entire world economic form is richer than richer than rich that you can imagine. These people got power and money, and they got Bill Gates's and Klaus's and all kinds of people all over. Trudeau went to this guy's teachings on how to become a dictator and take over a nation. This guy's crazier than heaven. And there he is, talking about Bill Gates. You gotta fix this virus, man, you gotta be ready for this virus. Well, I can get rid of it in 15 minutes. They lied. So you know that, they know that for a fact. From now on, you know for a fact. I wouldn't lie to you. I would never hurt you. I would never lie to you or hurt you. Your other book. Okay, I was mad at Glenn Beck for all, because you know he didn't back Trump, and I wanted to kick his cotton picking, you know what? But there's nobody, nobody on the planet that can do a chalkboard teaching like Glenn Beck. And of course, his book is gonna be, it's kind of, to me, he's always looking at the worst of things. I know God is preparing us to take, we're gonna, we're gonna win. We're gonna win. But you need to know the truth. You can't win if you don't know the truth, because the lies are out there. Glenn Beck, that's why I gave you that book there. Alright, so why is my book there? Well, I wasn't gonna do that, because I felt sad. I said, I don't wanna be a promoter of my own thing here, that's not why I'm here. But I felt the Holy Spirit kinda telling me, hey, you're gonna talk about your two camps, a lot of evil things you're gonna talk about. Well, the two camps I told you last time I was here, if you remember, that you guys, you did. Two camps. There's only two forces you're working with. Good and evil. Good and evil. You can, you can identify who you're with, and then you can make better decisions. This works for me on everything. I, I apply my two camps concept to every single thing, just like I did all this stuff. Somebody starts talking, 2000, somebody's talking, I already had this book written by then. I already been through hell. When you read my book, or if you read my book, you're gonna see, I already been to hell. So crap, man. These people are talking about dying. Hey, dying is gain according to Paul. Plus, Paul says dying's gain, let's die, man. But actually, I knew you were lying. Because I've been through this before. Final word. Fauci was around in the AIDS crisis. Fauci was around. I never knew that name. You gotta know, I knew what happened in the AIDS crisis. Fauci was around the AIDS crisis. You know what he did?
Killed.
He was?
Killed.
Oh, definitely. He told, he told him not to take certain drugs. And to take certain drugs, just like he did this time. And guess what they died of? AIDS pneumonia. COVID pneumonia, AIDS pneumonia. I mean, Fauci, man, he gives you what you need to die. We, we gotta stop this. We gotta know what we're doing. And let me tell you, it's the bottom up that's gonna win this. We're not gonna touch the top, obviously, they're so corrupt. I mean, like, Super Bowl, do that analysis on the voting. But I swear, I'm gonna do a channel now. So what I didn't put on your thing again, because I kinda feel weird promoting myself, but I have a channel. Rumble.com. 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 I'm gonna say it over and over. Rumble.com. You, you don't have to sign up. You just go there. Rumble.com. You go in and you click on channel. You put D Hank Ditchell in there, and up come my videos. I'm gonna do a video about what my sister did. Just a simple analysis of a person that just said, this isn't Adna. It's so brilliant. It's absolutely beyond belief that we all can think of it. I mean, we should have all called. I'm gonna tell you more about what's going on with those Pfizer documents. I'm gonna talk to you about the school board things. Do you know the books? I'm gonna be vulgar, so everybody just get ready. The books that I've seen that they have on the fourth graders and above, I think it's fourth graders and above, they had boys on there, it's like a cartoon. And they're showing these two boys with full-on erections. And then they show them in a bed, and one getting kinda freaked out by the other one poking. This isn't a fourth grade? Man, I worked somebody's head off for that stuff. That's ridiculous. Who would put that in there? And not our school board. Don't kid people on. I don't think our school board's evil. I just don't think that they're prepared for what's coming. I want y'all be, be prepared. I just come in here and prepare you. Be prepared, something bad's coming.[1341.98] You're gonna try to do stuff. And you know what? If it's of note, I have to take these books to the sheriff. I'm gonna have to take these books to the mayor. What's of note is I'm not told to take the books to the, to the school. I don't understand that, but I follow, I follow what I believe God told me to do. So, there it is. These are the books you're supposed to hear. There's something in it for you. If you give with God, he'll show it, show you what your part is. All right.
And the DPI right now is working on the sex education standards for North Carolina.
Yeah, and people be...
Well, yeah, I would assume that Mrs. Does well.
Mrs. Does?
This is not good. And they've got a full-blown laptop running this show.
These people are evil. And it's not, they didn't mean to be evil. They are grown up because we didn't mean them to. Doggone Christians didn't do a doggone thing to stop this evil from taking over our schools. I'm, I'm just disgusted with Christians. And, and I mean, I can't even really blame the world. I really don't know how to blame the world because they don't know any better. The Holy Spirit's inside of us. He leads us and guides us into all truth. Good and evil is easy to spot when you break it down. Evil? Is this evil? People are dying. People are lying. You're having to die? You're having to die?
Very sick, and will be sick for the rest of their lives. Taking their drugs, taking their medications. Having their tests, ordered on hospital. Repetitive.
Yeah, well, I'm going through it right now. I had to wear a mask last night.
Power, and power, power.
It's crazy what's going on.
And it starts right here. And it'll count, it's just like...
And I believe...
All across the country.
I believe y'all can.
And our, the school board will not allow us to speak with them in this manner. And they will not respond. They tell us they'll give, respond to us to thirty days. They do nothing.
I have some references from, but it's basically... It's basically taken out of CDC and, and...
And our healthcare people here in this county need to get a check.
That's, are original?
Yeah, it is.
Anyway, we were here to talk to you guys. We'll take it up with them over there if we need to, if God says so. So, okay, so that's my spiel, and I hope that, um, all of y'all have a good night. And God bless y'all. And we're praying for you all the time. Thank you. Oh, you want more information? Contact me. I just, I just touched it. Oh, boy, I got some good stuff. I'll put it on my channel. All right, we can't say, sorry. This time of night, I'm four out. I've been going through and on. So, thank you guys, have a great night.
Thank you.
You want to speak, yeah?
Yeah, I'll speak a little bit.
We got one minute. Yeah, we got one minute in the workshop.
I'll make it quick. I very much agree with the God part that you brought up. I've had all four shots. I'm not sick. I've never had to. Hope I never do, but there's a lot of people that have shots that you get. I've been blessed enough to be there to bring life into this world. And unfortunately, I've also been there when life has left this world. And without vaccines, like MMR, polio, and all of that, there'd be a lot more dead people these days than many days past. So, do they work? I think they do. But each of us, God gave us a brain and the ability to make our own decisions. So, yeah, let's keep using our brain. Let's try to make the best decisions we can for all the people around. Thank you.
I want to call the Grand County Board of Commissioners meeting of June 31st, 2022, to order members of the county board of commissioners are advised, are advised hereby their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of such conflict. And further are instructed to refrain from participating in any matter coming before this Board of County Commissioners with respect to which there is conflict, of interest, or the appearance of such conflict. And, um, let's do that. Do you have any questions for us?
That's great. Good afternoon, Heavenly Father. Just thank you for this gracious opportunity. Father, we ask that you just continue just to be with us, give us the thoughts and the emotions and the actions that we need to take. Father, we just thank you and everyone. And Father, most of all, we just ask that you just be with our families and our loved ones throughout this camp. Father, just continue to stay with us. Father, we're just so rich and blessed. And Father, we just thank you for everything that you did for us. Father, we just ask that you just continue just to protect us. You're precious, and Father, we just thank you, Pastor.
At my place, in the United States of America, and to your republic, or which it stands, we are nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is. Under item fifteen, discussion items, the process of bias tools, discussion item will be removed. Then, number sixteen, close session at county or J town.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Sorry. Um, I'll undertake a motion to approve, uh, the agenda meeting. Is there a second, please?
Second.
All in favor? And I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the special workshop of April fifth, workshop in regular April nineteenth meeting, May nineteenth emergency meeting of May the second, special meeting of May the second, and May the twentieth, and a continued meeting for May the twenty seventh. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? All right. Now, we will be closing the regular meeting to open a public hearing. So, I will need a motion to close the regular meeting, please?
Motion.
Thank you. Is there a second, please?
Sure.
Thank you. All in favor? We don't have a vote for public hearing. Uh, we start with the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Glad everybody's here. Folks decided to join us tonight. As everybody's known, if you've been to our some of the budget workshops that we've been involved in, this has been a test of the year, trying to be here. And I think it all goes back to a lot of things already been said. A lot of challenges out there today in the supply field. Inflation is hitting hard, and materials and supplies aren't getting hard yet. So, it was a challenge. I wanna, I wanna absolutely appreciate them all for their patience in working with us through the budget workshops. And I wanna also just, we've put out an extreme shout-out to the miss. Thank you, our CFO. She's spent a lot of hard hours, a lot of hard work, but I get her every view. Father, we can't thank you enough for the time and effort you've given. So, thank you very much.
All right. So, I do wanna thank the board for their, um, forbearance and perseverance through this very particularly challenging budget. Um, I'm gonna go through the budget ordinance, um, that I've got. A lot of comments to make this explanation that they are handing these highlights out to our audience as well as our board. One thing that I wanted to outline was the major priorities that the board addressed as they were, um, working through this process this year. Obviously, the first thing on the table was recognition of the negative impacts to our citizens and also to our employees of this, um, ridiculous inflation that we're experiencing. And, um, for our employees, um, the board felt it was a priority to ensure that no employee makes less than twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars per year, which is equivalent to fourteen dollars an hour. In that thing, um, there was other work that was done to ensure equity across the board with other county employees. Our board outlined a priority last year to continue to provide and enhance positive recreational opportunities for our youth by prioritizing repairs to the community pool, number one, and also to add to the Recreation Contingency Fund, which is about sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars per year. The board also recognized the, um, impacts of, um, our changing world where public safety is concerned. And so, they recognized the need to revamp the public safety salary plans. So, they worked very closely with, um, our public safety personnel to come up with a salary plan that was fair for our sheriff's deputies, our jail potential officers, our nine-one-one communications staff, and of course, we made some changes to the EMS, um, pay plan in the year last year. We also recognized the financial difficulties that were presented by unfunded mandates to our school system and provided additional fundings, uh, to the schools of two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars for a total of one million two sixty-three in current expense. And this represented, um, projections provided by the school finance officer of seven and a half percent cumulative increases since the county changed, um, the allocation from five-seventy, or five-hundred-and-seventy thousand to a million dollars several years ago. And then, we also recommended that the board consider increasing that current expense allocation by seven and a half percent for the next several years in a good paid effort to help the school system meet the unfunded mandates and to help build their fund balance over time. So, these were, there was a lot of discussion over these priorities, and so, we, we hope that we have been able to address this in our budget. If you wanna flip into your, um, ordinance, you can go back. I have four pages. Page, the fifth page. Flip four pages over. You'll see the total budget. Our general fund budget obviously is our largest fund, but we do have several special revenue funds that we have to budget for. And so, we came in with a general fund budget of twenty-one million, five-eight-six-two-twenty-four, which represents ninety-four percent of the total county budget. This is quite an increase over the twenty-one-twenty-two budget. And I'm gonna go over the reasons why here for just a moment. The major changes that have increased this budget are, um, pay rate increases to our pay plans for our public safety personnel, increase to our school funding, as I noted before, increases in employee benefits costs, which I'll explain here in just a moment, increases in the cost of doing garbage through our sanitation department, through fuel and dump fees increases, and the need of replacement of excavator, which was approved this budget year, but not being, um, celebrated until fiscal twenty-twenty-three. And the addition of one ambulance to the EMS budget typically we budget for one ambulance per year. This coming year, two, which was a long-term issue. The good news for the taxpayers is the mill makes a state at sixty-five cents. So, the board was very diligent to make sure that we did not put any, um, additional, burn on our taxpayers in these different whole financial times. We had, as I noted above, we had a seventeen point seven eight percent increase in our health insurance cost. That was a huge increase to our budget. But the board feels that it's a huge priority of ensuring that all of our employees have healthcare and that they're covered. We all know about the double-digit increases in our fuel costs, and we burn a lot of fuel in the course of a month with EMS, sheriff, transit, and sanitation. Those are our biggest fuel, um, usage departments. We estimate that our solid waste fees are gonna be at forty, uh, an increase of forty-seven percent. However, we are working and negotiating with another landfill, hoping that that cost will, will decrease. So, that will help my feelings especially because most of the increase I'm having to take out of fund balance this year. Retirement rates have increased about ninety cents for the third or fourth year in a row, and it's anticipated that that increase will continue over time. And of course, we know what inflation is doing. When we go to the grocery store, well, it's the same inflation we're dealing with when we have to purchase supplies and, and other things that are critical to the operation of the county. The increases in these total costs, as I noted, forced a hard examination of our budgets to reduce expenditures for feasible while maintaining our ability of our departments to continue to provide services to the citizen. We looked at where we could find additional revenue, and we are projecting that, um, sales tax revenue will increase three point five percent this coming year, as projected by North Carolina labor municipalities. And so, that being said, we came into our budget workshops with a two-point-one billion dollar deficit, and we were able to trim that deficit to where I'm having to appropriate fund balance in the amount of five-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars. And that's equivalent to about five point four five cents on the new rate. If you flip to the next page, you will see the breakdown of our revenues whereas, um, in our general fund. And you'll see, obviously, that's a large portion of our revenue comes from the property tax at thirty-one point four seven percent. However, this time last year, the budget, we, we, um, property tax was gonna take up thirty-six percent. So, as you can see, we're really trying to hold the line on how, number one, how we collect our taxes to make sure everyone's paying, but also to keep that tax rate, um, steady. Our shared revenues, um, are projected to be twenty-two percent. Our sales tax is projected to be fifteen percent. In this budget year we're ending, we, um, had budgeted for sales tax to take up seventeen percent and shared revenues to take up twenty-three percent. So, we have some changes in how, not so much the mix, but how, um, how the money's flowing in. Obviously, um, aside from our American Rescue Act allocation, which is not reflected in this budget, we are seeing a decrease in the shared revenue terms we're giving because the CARES Act numbers are running up and the other incentives are driving up. If you turn the next page, you'll see the breakdown of our expenditures by function. We budget by department level, and then each department has, it fits into one of these functions. You'll see that, um, as you can see in our, uh, this, this function reflects the priorities of the board. Public safety has the largest percent of our budget. That budget last year, or this year we're closing out, was comprising thirty-two percent of our budget. This year is thirty-six percent of our budget. So, you can see that the board is really, truly making a lot of investments in our public safety. How did we get from two-point-one million dollars deficit to half a million? Well, we did a lot. I, I said this year I had to use a scalpel. First, I had to use a machine, and then I had to use a scalpel, scalpel. But some of the things that we cut, um, were making sure that on the capital outlay in the budget, um, that's reflected as capital outlay, which the board has already created this budget here and will be expanding next year, aside from that extra ambulance. We had been budgeting about a hundred thousand dollars a year in, um, repairs to our building. However, buildings, I should say, we've got a lot of buildings. However, over the past several years, we've been able to get a lot of things fixed, so we trimmed that budget down. We're only major repairs and, um, emergency spending only for, for repairs. I cut the IT capital outlay by fifty percent to fund only critical IT infrastructure needs to maintain our network integrity. Basically, what we're gonna do is we hope to spend about two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, um, for our IT equipment, and we spread it over twenty-three and twenty-four. And as I mentioned, we have, um, the two ambulances. In addition, as I said, the board took a hard look at our wage rates and, um, did not approve a cost of living adjustment, but did look at, um, making sure people who are making less than fourteen dollars an hour are at fourteen, and also looking at the neckwinds. We also set a fund balance policy to ensure that our fund balance does not get built away or cut away, um, in any future budget year. So, at this point, for the twenty-twenty-one, uh, year, we closed that year at forty-seven percent of our total expenditures, fund balance. We said we'll go no less than thirty-five percent, and that is in line with local government commission recommendations. We also explored looking at our sanitation model and looking at how we can continue to cut our total cost of feeding and nutrition, seeking grants. I have to commend several departments, Sheriff's Department being one of those departments. They have gotten many grants this past year. And the grant money's still flowing quite well, so, um, all of the departments are being charged with grants wherever they can. And then, we look at our budget every month in our regular meeting. However, we'll do an intensive mid-year budget review just to see how our budget's doing against how our economy is doing. So, um, you will note, um, that I have, or we have laid out each, each section, and I'll let you look at it, look at those items, um, on your own time. And I will highlight a few things, um, in our general fund budget. You'll note that, um, if you, if you take last year's budget and set it next to this year's budget, you'll see that some departments we did do some increases on. Two of the departments we put some increase in staff in, that would be our administration department and finance. So, I don't want anybody thinking Becky's giving herself a big raise, because she hasn't. We are looking, um, at succession planning in our administration. There are five or six of us, of which four out of five or six of us will be retiring out. I'll be retiring in five years, eleven months, and nineteen days. So, we have to ensure that, um, we maintain the integrity of these departments, and so, our goal is to bring in additional, one, one additional staff on the administrative side, one additional staff in the finance side, so that we can begin bringing these people up so that they'll be ready to take the reins in the five years, eleven months, and days. We also can note, um, like I've said, the sheriff jail, ambulance, communications departments. If you laid last year's next to this year's, you'll see those are increased due to those pay plan changes. And we also added a fifty thousand dollar line because we've got fire trucks that are thirty-five or forty years old. Am I correct? So, we know that our volunteer fire departments are gonna need to be able to replace those trucks at some point, and so, the county is looking at squirreling money back, torn-down payments are what handy to help with those expenditures. Human services, if you turn the page, you'll see that those budgets are decreased over last year. But again, as I was mentioning, those pots of money that have boosted those budgets up during the Covid round are beginning to dwindle away. This county's been very blessed to get a lot of help for utilities assistance, for our folks, um, to help our foster parents, um, to take care of the children that they're taking care of, and to help our disabled population to be able to meet their monthly expenses. So, so, you know, unfortunately. Fortunately, Covid's beginning to wane, or it's not as deadly. It'll always be with us. However, we're seeing those pots of money grow up. You'll notice that under, um, cultural and recreation, you'll see what happened to the swimming pool budget. There is the refurbishment of our swimming pool. Uh, we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to rework that pool for our, for our folks. And then, the next page, you'll see the increase to the schools per expense. We are guaranteed for another year to get SRS temple money, so I'm gonna have you budgeted for that. And then, um, we, we paid off the Qs that are noted on the elementary school this past year. This coming year, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, we will pay off the high school. You'll see the debt service for that. And then, we'll rack in the debt service we just put in place, um, last week for the middle school. This is all funded with sales tax money, so this will not, um, be taken from, um, the property tax rate. And then, you'll notice we've made, um, several contributions to our nonprofits to recognize the good work that they do here in the county and, and as, as our rock hand. We will be making transfers, um, to a revaluation fund, making five thousand. Uh, we'll be, um, putting money, um, into our capital projects fund. We'll be spending the, uh, match money for the middle school. And then, as I noted, we put our, we throw the great grant exchange as well in this budget. Other budget, um, the budgets that we have to deal with are special revenues. You'll see the legacy telephone system. This is our nine-one-one account. It's very restricted as to what we can spend it for, but it's mainly, um, to pay our tip, our phone bills, separate communications, and then to increase, um, infrastructure and support. So, that budget will come in at three-seventeen, four-fifty-one. We'll be getting from the state a little over sixty-four thousand dollars. We have plenty of fund balance there. We need to appropriate because if you don't spend it, they take it away. So, um, Mr. Henry does a real good job on her capital planning, and so she's got several that she's gonna be helping out. The rebate fund, we'll be transferring eighty-five thousand into that back fund, and then going to, uh, close out our rebate, because we're gonna be having, um, a new rebate that is coming from... get, close out our rebate, because we're going to be having a new rebate that has come through through here. Our economic bailout fund, we budget every year twelve thousand dollars, and that's funded by rent payments on our park, our point of presence, which is right across the road there. We get rents from Lawson West and the Tribe. The National Open Wood Settlement, this is a special revenue fund, it's new. And we may change how we account for this. I was talking to a local government commission the other day, and they may recommend we do a project for them, and I've got some questions for them. We will be getting, we just got forty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars the other day, which I've got in fund balance, we're not making any expenditures at this point. And then this county budget year will get a hundred and seventy-eight, eight sixty-one from the national settlement. And these payments will taper off, but they will occur over a period of eighteen years. Then two new funds that are required after DASVAC eighty-four is our funds and forfeiture funds. This is where we pull in penalties for property taxes and different penalties that need to pay. And that money under the, under the statute and under DASVAC, and our House Department of Education, so that'll be an extra repot money that they get. And then we had to pick up our deed of trust and representative paying funds. These are funds that we hold for our citizens who, for whatever reason, are under guardianship or, and major on social security, and the county holds those funds in trust and spends those funds for the benefit of those parties. And then our register deeds collects funds off of deeds of trust, she holds those, and then we remit those to the state of North Carolina. And then the last page, you'll see just a revisiting of the American Rescue Plan Act. This is for semi purposes only, this is under project ordinance. We did get our second tranche of funding the other day in the amount of eight hundred and nineteen thousand, seventy-two, and we had eighty-two thousand, one eighteen left over. So the board looked at some broad priorities on how they would like to see this money distributed out, looking at inequities in our community, looking to see how we can best use it to, to help our citizens. And with that being said, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Mariano for public comment.
Outstanding. Thank you. Very good. Mrs. Collins, would you like to open it before up to see if we have any public comment on the budget as proposed? One proceeding. All right. If there is nothing, we will move back into the next item, Lord. Jim, she's closed up here.
Can I have one, please?
There was a need to go with a closed station for just a moment. We won't be for just a moment. There was a personnel issue that had to be, and take present before this afternoon.
Is there a second? Motion, is there a second? Thank you all.
All right. The next item would have been Mr. John Colwell, was wrapped up, was on the list, did a presentation. I've got some information that he provided me. I would probably rather him go over it, and I'll ask the surrounding, I'll let you look at it, we may end up having to do it another time. He hasn't been here, but I'll give this today, we'll need to pass it, and then we can do a little organization, how he started with some stuff for the community, which John has all, usually has some really good ideas, so. And with that. For those of you that may or may not know, Chair, Chair, Chair has really worked hard in several different programs and has a heart of words throughout not only our county, but throughout the state. And she's a voting member of the Vaya Health, and so they've honored her with this, and I'm proud to be the one to be able to give this to her. It says, "Vaya Health presented to Conny Orr, Board Member, Advocate, Friend. In grateful recognition of your service for individuals with behavioral health and intellectual developmental disability needs, thank you for your exemplary leadership." She works really hard.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I was a little bit surprised.
Speech, speech.
Thank you, this entire board and, and all of our staff, and, and thank you, Chief Jay, Chris Colton, and Ryan, and it's, it's a pleasure working with you, and thank you for all of you. So, and thank you for, for having the time to worry, it's really pretty amazing, all of you.
That's good, thank you. So with that, I'll move into, I'll do my manager's report, and then jump into the project manager's report. Try to keep it with several things still on the agenda, and the process coming up, try to keep it quick and brief as I can possibly do. Just an update, first item on the manager's report, I forwarded the email, looks like the, our meetings, and I'm hoping that Commissioner Nell's opinions will be a part of that. Our meetings with the force to, to object to forest plan to start in August, I have it. Our specific day, we'll be ready for all three, either one or all three, and the times have not been determined yet, but we'll, we'll expect to be on August second, third, and/or the fourth with the Forest Service to lead our case. I've also let Hayden and Forrest know, so that they can schedule that. We want them to be there as an advocate as well for Grand County. So good news there, we're working towards August to, to be able to say, give our piece to the Forest Service on their plan for the forest plan revision. No questions on that or comments, I'll move on to CDVG grants. We have seen some movement. We're actually working through the, I, I not only hope, but it better be the final round of procurement with some of these projects that we work on. This has been, it's been tough to say the least on getting responses and getting contractors to get involved, honestly. We will meet, if not this week.
We may.
Yes. See, and Mr. Gil knows, it's, it's been a challenge. We'll meet either this week, I know we're finalizing some, some budget stuff this week. We'll either meet this week or next week, we have some, some proposals to look over, is that correct, Ms. Collins? Yep. So we'll have a little committee get together and look at those.
It won't be April fifteenth, though.
April fifteenth. That's a different date. I like, a lot of this is just chronological dates, so we can kind of reference back. Next thing was, I know the board was probably aware, the Joyce Kilmer, Morey Forest annual hill climb. We just signed a letter, the Central Carolinas Region Sports Car Club of America, Board of Directors will be conducting their annual Dragon Hill climb event on July thirtieth and thirty-first this year. We'll be sure to let that get out.
I've got a question about that. Where is that?
Do you know where Joyce go where it?
Uh huh.
And just keep going, just trying to run past Joyce.
Road to nowhere. Uh huh. Is it, is it a time race?
Yes.
Yeah. Start at different times, whoever gets up there the fastest.
One car at a time.
Two at a time.
Two classes of cars, or two times a car.
It's interesting. It's definitely worth a watch.
Then you'll get it. Think I must say it all?
Yet some of them.
People do, yeah. A few of them get a ride home in a tow truck.
That's true. A few of them get a ride, and even, but they have a great time. Evening, Jordan. I'll come out and watch from a distance. It's definitely quite cool. Moving on to the next item, the Advent Health, I know the interest that the board has shown on supporting any kind of medical facility, although it's not too terribly close, we may end up using that, we've utilized different facilities all the time. So we did provide a signed letter in time, their application for certificate of need to build a new sixty-seven bandicue hospital in the Inkham area of Buckman County has been submitted, so we'll wait to hear about that.
Having had a serve.
Yep.
And the new construction of.
Yeah. And being that that end of Buckman County is, I guess, a little bit closer to Bishop for Grant County. Next item, we're moving forward, trying to get the well scheduled for monitoring well up at the closed landfill. Commissioner Eller did sign the permit for the Forest Service. I've just signed the application to North Carolina DEQ just to get permission to, to actually install a well on Forest Service property from the state. It's a state, it's federal approval, now state approval. We look for that turnaround about two weeks in scheduling the, to do the well, I'd say, mid to late summer, and I'll report more on that as we get forward. Getting those wells installed. Then the last item, from the June second, or no, it was third, budget meeting, I was requested to set up a meeting with the school superintendent, the board, board commissioners, with our state legislators. I sent an email out back, back June third, and I've been working with Representative Gillespie's legislative assistant, Andrew Bailey, who indicated their availability is limited while we are in session. Presumably, they will have more availability in July, in July if short session is adjourned by that time, and I'll continue to coordinate for a potential meeting in July, as early as July, till late July as possible. I'll stay on top of that. No questions about the manager's report or comments? I'll move, you should have three documents for the project manager's report. Again, going down that. RDA, boost branch subdivision, no movement, I'm showing it at ninety-five percent. Right now, the contractor, DR, is having a problem with their guardrail company, and right now there is no definitive date of when they're going to come to install that guardrail. Our advocate, who's McGill, we all know McGill, has actually made it clear that that's unacceptable, and I sent another email to both the contractor and McGill representing RDA, that the board, the RDA board is important, working right now and trying to get enlisted property. We really need those deeds and those plans and the project finished, so they need to work on a better end state in eight weeks from now. I'll continue to monitor that, and that's just a little bit of hiccup in that part for the RDA.
You want to spend fifty, sixty, eighty, nine, ten?
And have to pay back the loan. So I, I made them, I let their aware of that, too. We could either get some money back so we can pay for that loan, so. So I'll continue to monitor that and work that condition. Status on the two metal buildings, there's no, there's been no construction, however, I met this week with completing utilities. Both buildings need dressed up around the outside, obviously, they need seating and grading, there's a structure needs to be put in at the red building, the Parks and Recreation Building. But I want to, to me, instead of doing it twice, I want to go ahead and dig utility connections, so that we're, we're not digging through what we've already replaced. So we're going to start working on getting at least the connections as far out away from the building, so we can dress up the site, complete all that, get the stacked metal and the wood out of the way, we've already started planning to do that. I'm expecting some numbers from, I wanted, I was wanting them today to provide to the board, but I didn't get them for the completion numbers for both buildings, so as soon as I get that, I'll present it to the board on the floor of those, try to get those. As you are probably aware, the board of elections, they have moved in. We have very least customers. I'm showing it at ninety-nine point seven complete, only because there is, I got a quote for a price of the sign, external sign, I wasn't really happy with the cost of that, so I'm going to try to shop and see if I can get that cost down. And then there's a lock that needs for the bypass window on the inside, it's the only couple of items, little bunch of items that are done. The facility is really, really nice, and I'm proud of what we've all done in that facility. I urge you to take a look at that as soon as possible, we may have a chance to do that. We are moving towards phase two of that project, which is to, as you can see, we've made preparations for the demolitions to start in the women's bathroom. There is, I'll stop that just briefly to, I want to get a different lock for the, well, B, which is actually the women's bathroom now, so that we don't have any problems, and then we'll start working with probably the jail crew to help us do the demolition, and we'll move forward that hopefully this week as well, if not, starting next week. Next project is the Grand County Justice Center project. I wanted to show you a couple of things that we've got on that, and I've been in contact with some, it really needs to be a C Mar, Construction Manager, Risk Firm, that we get packets from. So I've been in contact with SLAM, Mosley, and also L S P, and I'll be in contact with a few others. Right now, we're setting the date to have the committee to, or have the Bozles submitted by August the second. And of course, we'll have a committee put together and look at those. We've already got several names, Commissioner Nell's will be a part of that. But I'll show you what, in preparation for that, this is probably a twofold, I'm going to show you the, it's a chance for us to see a little bit of our website, but I'll show you where you are. Here on the screen, as you can see, is the RFQ, go out with the contractors, and what they'll be able to see, and I shouldn't say, it's, it's not contractors, it's really a designing team, of course, that'll handle it pretty much for all of us. They stroll through the first couple of pages, this is where we help, they'll be able to access the program. If you remember, we had a hearing that they became SLAM to do our program, and then this RFQ will be accessible, it's a link that you'll be able, goes right to our site, and you get to see my ugly mug. And then right over here, you'll be able to click on the Grand County Justice Center, you'll be able to click on the program, and you'll be able to, each one of our interested design teams will want to see this to see what idea that we, we're trying to base our construction of our facility on. Obviously, during our design, we will do something a little different than the exterior of this, it just happens to be the design. It has the whole, it has the whole design team, and of course, the other, the other one would just be the same person to show you, it's basically RFQ. So it's available. Also wanted to be able to show you a little bit about, while we're here, our site, I think it's an outstanding new addition to our, you can go through here and see the different board commissioners, but I love the different tabs, to be able to click on whatever you may have, really, really user-friendly, register of deeds, goes right to, and I can click on any one you want to see. We also made the justice center available, too, when you go to the homepage, you close, you click directly to the, to that site to be able to pick up those same documents. We're advertising for, I can't even say the word, Sessquintinial, I think is what it's called. That is on here as well, we're planning for, that's some really great views of our beautiful Again, each department, it's listed, you have your different departments, I can click on any one that you want. So I think Abraham has done a great job on putting this together. It's going to be a useful tool for everything that we're having to do at local government, but also through the process of our audits. I just wanted to provide that update. I just wanted to provide that update. There's no questions, moving on to item six, which is the sixth grade middle school addition. I got a phone call from this time wash asking and inviting the board, she'll set up a time when you want to, really encouraging the board to come out and visit, and I went to, I try to go to each monthly meeting over there at night. Other times, where we meet on the 28th, if you want to take a trip over there, I encourage the board to keep that in mind, they'd really like for you to come over and see, really, really going to be a plus for our kids. You can see the provider, they're showing, they're providing the status update from that. Right now, they're showing in December of this year, completion of that project, which will be great, and we'll hope that they stay on track, considering all that they've been, had to go through. And then last, but not least, provided the only bid, for the third bid we did on the 16th of June, we only got one bid from Adams Contracting, I've provided the numbers for that. Total bid was $997,362.50, which is way outside the range that we've budgeted for this project. It was originally, the base was $285,000, and that was state money. The engineer went ahead with everything that's going on, inflation, fuel costs, he had a 40% tangency, which is about $399,400K is what we were thinking might, it might come in around, and then obviously, it's way above what they're willing to really look at now. So the plan is, we're supposed to meet, I'm waiting on Mr. Heekel to deal with me on scheduling a meeting with, and Adams Contracting was our only bidder, and either value engineer or see if there's any movement in their number. And Commissioner Wiggins, if you would like to be a part of that, that would be great. That's supposed to happen potentially this week. We'll move as forward as we can, we'll see what they'll, they'll be willing to do. The state has in the past, when you've had higher money come in for EWP, they will kick in some extra money. Our engineer feels like this is way more than they'd be willing to kick in. So we'll know, we'll know a little bit more about what direction we may end up going up at the board's discretion, obviously, once we find out, and have that meeting.
I don't think they were acquired, what kind of those, those designs, seven or 1.9.
Yeah. We'll continue to press forward, I've been out there, and it does, there's a lot of things to be done. So I'll continue to press forward, and we'll set up a meeting, and I'll let Commissioner Wiggins know. Are there any questions or comments or concerns? Okay. I thought I would move forward, and I think it's Ms. Garland.
So I have the finance report for the month ending 31st of May. If you look on the front page, page one, you'll see that our general funding cash balance to $91,269. That does include about $543,000 that we reimbursed ourselves for through loan proceeds on capital projects in our bills. We are about $537,000 less than this time last year, but I'll show you why here in just a moment. In our capital projects fund, we have $226,631. I'm going to be transferring little less than $336,000 out of the loan proceeds to reimburse us for middle school expenses. We had another 14 and some change in the school practice, school sales tax account, American Rescue Plan student, 82675, end of the year, or end of the month, and again, a few days ago, we got the second tranche of the American Rescue Act. And then our Skidport House account is adding nicely to itself. We've got $5,301,000. The good news about interest rates going up is that we earn better interest, so we got a couple thousand dollars in interest on this account this past. You look at that, that's the obligation, never as much as what they must pay. On page two, you'll see our property tax collections, hung in real, real close to the sun last year, we had total real property taxes of $37,222. Last year was $37,229, so I was like, why could you not find seven dollars? BTS was a help here this month, and last year was $56,837, last year was $51,751. So that, that continues to grow as when people are paying more for their automobiles these days. You turn to page four, you'll see that we have collected $7,135,850 in real property taxes, and $578,719 in DMV. We are ahead of the sun last year on real, the metal shot $20,000, and DMV, we're ahead a little over $18,000, almost $19,000. Our tax collection rate is the highest I've ever seen it, thank the taxpayer, for this time of the year, $97.38. Last year, we were $97.91, but every penny counts. So we're happy to see continued progress in our property tax collections. If you look at page five, before you have your card taken, it's all explainable. We have revenues, $973.3, our expenditures were $2,167,000, for a net deficit of $1,191,000. However, I changed the timing when I cashed out all the special appropriations. We paid the school bond payment, but we also, I cleaned out all the special appropriations, just so we have a clean slate for June as we're closing out the year, and so our special appropriations was seven, little over $722,000. Last year, if you look at last year, our expenditures were way up in the $2 million for the June year, and that's because I changed my policy on when I'm going to pay out appropriations. So it's all explainable. We're not looking as good in our surplus or deficit as we did last year, however, again, it's all explainable. But with page six, you'll see the revenue collection for $16,866. We spent $16,959 for a net year-to-date surplus of $93,000, I'm sorry, deficit of $93,793. But again, I spent down those appropriations earlier, and of course, we have all of the receivables to pick up after our June year end. We've collected a million two more in revenues this year than last. We spent $2.4, which is $700,000, $773 for those appropriations, and we remember all the capital projects expenditures we made as well. We've done a lot of good things with people's money this year, and so I'm just hopeful that we will see, especially in our recreation area, the new red building, I think that people are going to be real pleased with that, be able to have their children trial their uniforms, I say costumes, I'm a dance mom, uniforms, and it'd actually be a nicer atmosphere for the kids to do that. Sales tax, if you look at page seven, we're still up from this past month and this past year, we collected just the other day, $259,694 for our April collections. We are ahead of this time last year, about $218,000. So we've had about a, about a 9% increase. So you can see I was very conservative in my budget for sales tax, however, they are anticipating a slowdown, so we don't want to overbudget that revenue. We also collected a little bit over $26,000 in our quarter cent sales tax, which is not included in this first figure. So overall, since we began collecting the quarter cents, we collected $729.6, and I'm going to have about $140,000 to transfer into that capital management class. And then, if you look on our collections, you'll just see that our tax collection office is continuing to whittle down on these old balances, just to give you a point of reference, for 2022, tax year, we still have outstanding at $187. This time last year, it was for that tax year, that current tax year, it was about $220. So we can see that both our taxpayers are being very diligent in how they pay their taxes, and then our collections office is also working very, very hard. One other note, and page nine, you'll see that this is just the amount that we've spent on these capital projects. We spent a little over $156,000 in the election for renovation. Red building's about a little over $88,000, cemetery's a little over, a little under $78,000, and then the county match on the middle school stands at $688,000, for a total middle school expenditure, we're maybe a little over $2.70. As I've alluded, the county borrowed, we closed the loan last week, last Tuesday, and a little over, right at $2 million dollars to cover the county's portion, to spread our budget, the county's portion of the middle school project, but also to cover the cost of our capital projects. That's good fiscal sense. You want to, you want to take your loan from projects and finance those loan from, to spread, to level up a budget, say we want spiking up property taxes to cover these expenditures. And we got in right under the wire for the Fed increase in interest rates, so I was like, yeah, so it pleases to be able to get that going. Any questions on the finance report? Okay, we've got our budget report for the month ending May. We should have, at the end of the May, we should have 8% in our budget, with one month left. If you look across the page, you'll see that pretty much all of our departments are staying within budget. I did have a budget amendment for a couple of departments, but it's all ranked, three of them, so it's good news. We've got about 21% left in the budget, so we're standing pretty good, but we've been frugal in our spending this year, and I'm glad for that, but we've also done a lot of really good things, too, so I'm pleased that we have this year's closing out. I do have, any questions on the budget? I think we're all about budgeting now, aren't we? I do have some amendments to bring, of which one we pulled aboard, one amendment the board approved last Tuesday night, it related to DSS, I just need it ratified. Budget amendment number 22, senior senior tourist, to pick up $12,272 in crisis funds. And budget amendment number 23, hold aboard so that I can make these distributions to the schools and the volunteer fire departments. We got an additional $10,202 in SRS money, I was so excited, so as you know, 80% goes to the school system, and then we only take the other 20 to our volunteer fire departments. So they got a little extra shot in the arm, and I think that'll be handled in discussion items. And then I do have budget amendment, budget amendment number 24. This is to pick up the additional funding that we have been allocated for transit, our COZ Act, for additions to salaries and benefits. We also have some here over money from COVID for the elections to cover, which we basically spent those down. We are anticipating having some additional cost in elections for contracting services, that the board's aware of, so I'm budgeting for that. We got an additional $26,550 in JCPenney funds that will, with Zéro County match, that will pass through to one of the organizations that's very involved in that program. And then, as I mentioned before, it's the sheriff and the jail have gotten several grants, this is to pick up two new grants. One is in the jail for NCVHS COVID mitigation, a little over $65,000, and then the sheriff's department got a new grant, which they begin to spend this budget year that we're still in, it's the Internet Crimes Against Children grant. So they're going to be getting a lot of really good equipment to, to do surveillance of people that are doing bad things to our children over the internet. That's $74,617, so we'll have a net increase to the budget for 2021, 2022 of $257,193 to pick up the additional grant programs.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve budget number 22 for $12,211. Amendment number 23 for $10,202, and amendment number 24 for an increase of $257,193. I'll play your motion.
Bobby.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Is that breathing?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I think, is there any public comment over everything, please? Please, actually.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, a heartfelt thanks, or thank you, for developing the paramedic home service program you've all started. This has provided our town...
Go ahead, just making sure this is all for you.
Thank you. Can you hear me now? Sure, sorry. Okay, I just want to say good evening, everyone, and I want to give a heartfelt thank you for you all starting that paramedic program, having them come to people's homes and take care of them on a non-emergency basis, and it has helped our town so, so much, you can't imagine, with a couple of our residents out there, who really depended on them. And I also want to say, we have, thank you again for the transport system that you all have going on. We're blessed to have it, and this extraordinary system has helped numerous residents out by need to get doctor's appointments and medical tests, and not worry about trying to drive or find someone to drive them. So I really, really want to say thank you very, very much, it is amazing. And also, too, on a whole different subject, with the Nantahill Regional Library, at our last meeting, we had decided to put a, to start thinking about having some type of a flat made in dedication to Raymond Williams at the community room in the library. I had checked with Ms. Chris, and she thought that it would be okay for us to start that project, and she also showed me what you guys are doing for him, and I think it's wonderful, and I'm blessed to know that we're going to try to do something as a memorial for Raymond. August meeting, we'll talk about it, and the starts of develop it. So I want to thank you for that, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the fact that you was... We're just here a whole lot, I just...
Aw.
We die when you say it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Very much, we've been a very proud...
That's amazing.
...for years, and our transit system, probably is the best in the state, and what can you say about Raymond now?
My name.
Appreciate you for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're speaking to the hearts of this board, and thank you telling me that those are two well-used proponents in this campaign.
It's amazing.
I'm thankful personally for what they're saying, but they do.
Any other public comment? All right, very good, well, thanks again. We move on to item 15, the discussion items. The first one is the adoption of FY '22, '23 budget. Does it need a vote?
Do I hear a motion to approve the 2022, 2023 budget for Grand County?
Motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Wiggins, is there a second?
There is.
Thank you, Commissioner Eller, all this time. Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
That's kind of a sigh of, phew.
Now we're going to all.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Next item, releases $2,683.40 in discoveries, $9.15.
Do I hear a motion to approve for releases and discoveries?
Okay.
Is there a second? Do you all in favor?
Very good. The next item we're going to, we'll table, we may even talk a little bit of this, about this and close. We did find another area to take our trash, very much lower rated, $20.15 a ton. So a very good option for now. We've got to make sure that's going to be a solid figure, but we'll talk a little bit. Or poll for budget amendment for $10,202.12 SRS money.
Can we ask for a motion to approve, said amendment? We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right, approve order of collection for Juan Lebo and Dequina table.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Reappoint T A B board members Ginger Cleveland, Tony Orr, David Menor. Man, sorry. I should go back.
This is the tab board. Members for transit.
I got it.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor?
All right, next item, no action needed, just a notice of holiday closing on July the 1st and July the 4th. And then the last item under discussion items, is there any new or old business?
I've got one more time. I don't know if you've counted the union or I would. We didn't cross the boundary to go up there and look at our constitution. That is, in that age, very important, and we're probably just getting it by the ball play.
I'm glad you brought that up. I actually talked to a gentleman today about they're going to have somebody have no year to do the rock work, so I'll get a little more engaged in that.
So they're prepared to do more.
Yeah, they're going to, there's some rock work that never to get done. Had a volunteer, and the volunteer just never to show back up from doing the stone. So I'll, I'll get a little more involved in that.
I'm wondering if we're going to have to empower it or if I could get that budget for last year.
Potentially, yeah. I'll get, absolutely, I'll get more involved in it. Can be named in the rest of the ground.
He wants to be in all his projects. But it has, it has been, and thank you for the work that you did on it, Jake. But it was a slow process, wasn't it?
I think it's nice to do with, with, down here, the library, the store, courthouse.
But he worked that really well, with his flat, you know.
Yeah, I told the gentleman today just to start coordinating with me on that. I'll get that.
I'd say that's another model off, so.
Very good.
So if we can support them anyway, maybe with, you know.
Absolutely.
Moving on. Thank you.
Commissioner Nels, do you know, was there a design ever that had a, like a sign that showed all of that? Nothing, you're just going to run it.
Really, they just asked us a place to sit.
Okay. Is there any other new or old business? Close.
Any ideas, question? Any, anything, a motion to go ahead and say?
Yes, you do. You want to accept the vote for the poll, 135,866,38, as stated by our manager, Marina, for Campbell's Pull and Spaw, Incorporated.
I'll entertain a motion. To accept the vote.
Thank you for the motion.
All in favor?
That's all we have.
And I need you all to continue this meeting to June the 28th at 2:00 o'clock or a different time. If needed, me and Cody.
I'll find out. 2:00.
Okay.
June 28th?
That's a Tuesday, that's next Tuesday. That's so you can finalize all the budget amendments for year end, so Becky can close the books.
We should be about 20 minutes. About three days of work. I'll entertain a motion to continue the meeting until June 28th.
2:00.
At 2:00.
2:00 in the morning? Oh, got you better. I'm usually up.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? We've got a rally bunch on this.
Some things they don't never check into. I'm glad. I'm so glad.